Good evening, welcome to the Ashland Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, September 26th, 2019. It's about 7:19 here in the Board of Selectmen's meeting room in Town Hall. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on WACA cable access, and we thank them for that. On our agenda tonight, we have a public hearing for 81 West Union Street Phase Two. This, we expect, is going to be continued until October 10th, so we're probably not actually talking about that tonight. We have a public hearing for 310 and 320 Pond Street, the proposed restaurant in the Sears Plaza. And that'll be at 7:45. We also have a number of other items like a lot release, discussion with the Design Review Committee, talk about zoning changes, we're planning for fall and spring town meetings, a energy code voting process, co-urbanized discussion, as well as some minutes and other administrative matters. So with that, we do have a continued public hearing on 81 West Union Street, Phase Two Site Review. This is continued from August 22nd, 2019. And I believe we have a letter asking to continue, yes, we do have a letter asking, it says, "Please continue tonight's meeting until the board's meeting on October 10th." I'm not sure what all is going on. I know our planning director's been having some discussions with them concerning the, some of the definitions for screening and setbacks to see if maybe they need to make some adjustments before they come back. We'll see on that how fruitful that is. But any case, since the applicant isn't here, it would be appropriate for us to continue it. Do you know what else we have on the October 10th agenda?
We're gonna have the EverSource Pipeline. And then also, we have 12 Pond Street. Since our last meeting, 12 Pond Street, the old Fusion site, has filed. And we're gonna have, we're gonna open up the public hearing for that, that project on October 10th.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, as far as time on this, do we have a time on the, I think EverSource is probably 7:15?
EverSource is 7:15. I would say this would probably be appropriate at like 7:45.
Okay, oh, EverSource, we'll probably have some other. So let's do 7:30, just to be on the safe side?
Okay.
And we can put the Pond Street after this?
Yep.
So, can we have a motion to continue this public hearing and discussion until October 10th at 7:30 PM? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That passes 5-0. Alright, that was fast, not terribly productive. But our next item is the public hearing on the restaurant is scheduled for 7:45. It is not an item that we can start before the advertised time. So for now, we'll skip over that and move on to other items. We have a lot release for Brogdon Road Extension. The agenda says Plan Number 537 of 2018 Lots 1 and 2. This was a two-lot subdivision. And so this would be releasing both lots?
Yes, so just speaking to this, Brogdon Road Extension subdivision was a two-lot subdivision approved by the board in 2017. Those lots, so the road has been built to, I would say, to subgrade. They, the building department had released, had issued building permits. However, the, no surety was submitted and no lot releases were kind of, were signed off on. So to release the covenant, the planning board needs to release the lots, which this document would do. This week, I did meet with the developer and I did secure surety for the remaining work on the project, which met both mine and DPW standards. So right now, the planning board, you have hold surety in a bond and escrow account for the remaining work at Brogdon Road Extension.
Okay, and as a procedural thing, since this might be the first time this has happened when, since you started as planning director, in the past, the planning board has voted to accept the surety.
Okay.
So if, if we have some disagreement as to the dollar figure, or if they forget to add a contingency and potential inflation and things like that, that it's just another check and that's a, traditionally, we do that. But you're satisfied that we have sufficient?
Yes, I am satisfied, and Doug Small, DPW Director, was satisfied. And the work has been also approved by the Water Department. And so everybody was granted approval on what surety has been submitted.
Okay. So I'll leave it to the board, if the board wants to review the surety first, that would be okay? Or if we want to just, in this case, just trust that it's all good and sign it, we could do that as well.
Is there any documentation in here that I'm supposed to be, there's none in it for this?
Yeah, none for this, this is just a procedural.
Yeah, we have three copies here to sign.
And I'll, if, if signed, I'm on my notary, public notary, and I can notarize everyone's signature.
So, is the, is the board comfortable signing?
Right.
Okay.
With the planner's belief that we have sufficient surety in Doug Small's, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know where the property is, or those, when it was released.
It's off of Brogdon Road?
Yeah, Hickey has the, off of like High Street, there's a big subdivision back there, it's a cluster development. And there was a lot that you get to through his subdivision, though he wasn't the one who developed those two lots. So, it's, it's also adjacent on the other side to, there's a, the Whittamore Estate subdivision that hasn't been built yet, that it would be up against. Alright, in that case, can we have a motion to release the, the two lots in Brogdon Road Extension?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 5-0. So we can sign.
I will say, as everyone's signing the document, that I have been contacted by the developer of the High Street Extension, Steve Hickey, and we are moving forward. He asked to, to get a, an amount for the remaining work, so he could submit a bond of surety to, to get his last lot release on that subdivision. And so I have today, Mike Carter from GCG and myself visited the subdivision, and he's gonna work with the approved plans and come up with an estimated cost, which then will be approved, obviously, by Doug Small. And it will be submitted to you, the planning board members. And it just, for me, it's good to know procedurally how you guys are accustomed to sureties and lot releases.
We can change that if the board wants to just leave it all administrative in the future. But, you know, in the past, we've always looked at it.
There's been a few cases where there was some things that we wanted to add in there.
I think, I think it would be good for the board, this board, to come up with a policy on what surety needs to cover, looking at the subdivision policies. You know, should the surety cover all remaining work? And what contingency that, you know, would suffice for the town? Speaking from experience, in town of Hanover, where we took the costs, the estimated cost of the remaining work, and we took 150% in a bond of that remaining cost, which would account for inflation. And so we took 50%, we tacked on 50% of inflation to the estimated cost. So that's something to, to think about. Obviously, it's not right now in our procedures, within our, within our, in our subdivisions. However, regarding subdivision regulations and subdivision rules and regulations, I would say that this board can adopt policies on those subdivision policies without going to town meeting. And so if we wanted to do something like that, we would have to advertise as a public hearing and hold a public hearing and adopt the policy, and then we can move forth and make changes to that subdivision bylaw, which is something that would just kind of clean up, I would say, the, if there is any confusion, I would say.
And I would also add that if they come in for a bond reduction, we would want to see it. I wouldn't want to just, because there's a lot of times, there's a lot of stuff that we would like to add. You know, because a lot of times, they'll get so far through it and they'll come in for a bond reduction, if it's a huge thing. I would want to make sure we could still be involved in that, because.
So administratively, I've, I've always kind of worked, I would say, in the past, is the planning board signs off on bond reductions as well. And so the numbers comes up through the DPW, and really on a larger subdivision project, you know, it's, you know, a third-party engineer, you know, really kind of works with the planner and the DPW. We come up with a number, we request a bond, the planning board's involved, and they submit the bond, and then lots are released, right? And then, as the bond is reduced, the actual planning board has to sign off on the bond reduction, just very similar to a lot release.
But just as long as it's, you know, for fixing up that policy, I would like to still see a reduction come to the board, because.
No, I, I agree 110%.
There's a lot of issues that pop up when they try to get the.
Yeah, no, 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 I agree. Okay.
Peter, one question, just for, for reference, reference to what you said. So what you're saying is the policy in the town of Hanover and the inflationary rate that you guys use, that left Hanover better protected for, for things that happen as developments come to a close?
Yes, yeah, so if anything ever happened, you know.
If it happened years later, or.
If it happens years later, you know, a subdivision takes typically years to develop, right? And so there's inflation, there's construction costs, there's changes. And so every town is different. And, and, and don't take it it has to be 150% of the estimated cost of the remaining work. It could be 110%, 125%, whatever this board feels comfortable with, you know. I think 150 was fairly extreme, it was on the extreme end, I'm not gonna, that's from my personal view. It has to be, it has to be kind of, it's the, what am I trying to say here? It's the, it's the Goldilocks, it's a Goldilocks kind of issue. Has too hot, too cold, you know, is it too low or too high? Where does that kind of sit, you know? So I think we just need to come up with a number and then move forward. I think, you know, 125% is probably a good, average, solid number to, to ask for of the remaining cost of the work. If you guys want to see more, 130, 135, whatever it is, we can discuss it, you know, if you guys, you know. It, I guess I can go out and ask, I can, we can ask, you know, surrounding towns what their policy is, if they have one. But it makes sense just to put it in the regulations, so when the sub, when this board, the planning board asks for surety on a subdivision. And mind you, I'm not, I think the town of Ashland has developed a lot, and there's a lot, there's been lots of subdivisions in the past. You know, I think, is there, I'm not expecting Hugh, you know, 200 lot, you know, 30 lot subdivisions coming into the town. However, moving forward, if you do adopt a policy, you put it in the, in the, in the regulations, therefore, a developer knows when he comes in as the applicant, that within the bylaws or within the decision, it's referred to, and then it's fairly clear and cut moving forward. There's, it kind of takes away any confusion, I would say.
So what would be a goal time to put out something like that on the agenda sometime after town meeting?
Probably sometime after town meeting, you know, over the winter time, just to, you know, to think about it. But, you know, it just came, it came across my desk as these lot releases came through, and then I'm working through the first policy with, I would say, the real big, I would say, the requested bond, which would be for High Street Extension. How, how has it been done in the past? How do we want to work moving forward? Because I, I think I said in the last couple, you know, Emma and I are, we're a fresh set of eyes on the policies and how procedurally the planning office runs on permitting and subdivisions, you know, for, for this board. And so it's a, it's a, it's a time to kind of look at everything in a new light, you know.
Use some of that.
Well, thank you. Well, I think we should take our time and look at it and change it if need be. If, if, if we think, but if it, if it's always worked in the past, let's continue on, I would say. But just something to think about.
Okay, time for a couple more, at least one more of the administrative items?
Uh, yes, so.
Should we jump to the minutes, or should we do the co-urbanized discussion?
Uh, the co-urbanized discussion, sure. That's a, that's a good one.
Let's do the co-urbanized discussion. We've been talking a bit about, in past meetings, about whether or not to continue to use co-urbanize. And we've moved some of our current projects to keeping the documents on the town's website. So.
So what I printed out for you, for the board tonight, is a fee schedule from 2019 for co-urbanize. So looking at co-urbanize from, from new eyes, you know, co-urbanize is, 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 is a great tool. However, and it's a real, it's a planning tool. And most communities using co-urbanize right now, use it for master planning, strategic planning, to, to engage the community. I forget which communities are actually using it right now for master planning events. But this is very typical for a master planning. I know when I, I've, I've completed two master plans from, from, you know, start to finish getting funded at a town meeting. We used MA, you know, both towns that I worked in, we used MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, which we're members of. And through MAPC, they actually hosted, as part of their scope of work, they actually hosted a website for the master plan. And that lived for X number of years, and actually, the town took ownership of that URL over a number of years in that information. So MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, they do not use co-urbanize. However, I would say consultants, planning consultants are using co-urbanize as a hosting mechanism to, I would say, reach out to the public in each community for master planning events. Ashland's using it a little bit different. We are using it to post information, very project-specific projects. So each planning board, each planning board application has to pay a fee. And the fee schedule's right here, a small project, a medium project, a large project. You can see here, so a small project is probably your average project, and it's a $450 fee on top of the application fee for any applicant. The town has, has, has a fee, an annual fee of a little under $5,000. And that's paid for by the town for this, for the, for, for co-urbanize to host all, all documents, right? Then each applicant has to submit the check after, therefore. What Emma and I have been doing, I would say, since, you know, we came on board here, is using the town's website to post all of the documents pertaining to each application. So I know we kind of kicked it, we talked about it at the last meetings, you know, do we want to, does the, this board want to continue to use co-urbanize? Or do we want to cease the use of co-urbanize and transfer the, I would say, the posting of all planning documents regarding the application, the PDFs of the site plan, PDFs of stormwater, any reports from the engineers to the town's website, which we control, which we, the town already pays for as a whole, I would say, within its technology budget. And so this is add-on, so this is kind of, it's a luxury item that this board has used. And we've, that board, this board has used it for a number of years. It's been very good. I believe the community has, has gotten used to going to co-urbanize to, I would say, look at planning documents. And myself and Emma, we're, we're totally, we support this board in their decision to use co-urbanize or to transfer to the planning, to the, to the town's website. I would say Emma has manipulated the town's website, so when you go to development projects, it goes to the development projects page. So I'd say, over time, yes, we're gonna change, we could change it, but it's really up to the board. What direction do you want to take this? If you do, if, if, whatever way it goes, we could therefore shift our application process in our application fees, but, you know, just in being a fresh set of eyes, not having come from a community that uses co-urbanize, I kind of am looking at it as a, as, as, it's a, it's a great tool, but the town's website does theoretically the same thing. So I would say that's where, so I just want to get you guys, the board, the fee schedule, to understand what the town and really the applicants are paying for.
So the applicants just pay this amount that's here?
The 550, the 450?
So the town just eats the fee to keep it up and all that, so we're paying that 500 a month, plus that?
Correct.
So it's costing us money. It's not like the applicants are paying the whole.
No, it's, it's a cost to town, in my, to my assumptions, it's costing town about four, it's $4,950 a year as a hosting fee to keep that website up.
That's the cost of the software, but to the extent that the fees offset that cost, the town is reimbursed.
So every time application comes into the planning office, they have to submit a check, say, say a project. Yeah, and so then Emma and myself mechanically would email co-urbanize and say, the Ashland Planning Board has a new application in this week. The address is 101 Main Street, which is Town Hall. Please create a account, and here is the, you know, and please send us the invoice. You know, they send us the invoice, we pay them with the applicant's check, and therefore, we then are, they create the link of the page, and then we can, I would say, upload information to that page.
So you need to upload it twice, basically, to two places?
Yeah, so I think in the past, historically, the planning board only uploaded stuff to co-urbanize. And very seldomly did we use the website to the fullest extent that we can as the town. So the question is, do we want to do it twice? You continue with co-urbanize and post in two places? Or cut back and use the town website? Or would the board just like us to continue using co-urbanize as the main source of posting? Or, or I would say, the main website for posting documents for the planning board?
And this monthly fee, what's that?
So the monthly fee is a neighborhood plan, that's typically for like a master plan. I don't believe we use it in that particular aspect, I would say.
Does the town website have the capacity to, to grow as the document, you know, the different projects grow? To keep the speed of?
We can keep the speed, yes, you know, I believe so. And then over time, as a project finishes up, or they obtain occupancy permits, you know, we can take those down. We can unpublish the documents, and, and we save them in, you know, we use, on the cloud, and they live in, as public documents, you know.
Storage is cheap.
Yeah, and I noticed that, I haven't looked at, like, I was clicking on Emma's links that she sent, you know, it's looking right where I needed to go, so thank you. Love it. But I noticed on co-urbanize, like, it's, it's really graphic, you know, and do we have a capacity to, not to make it into that, but to, I know sometimes when you're scrolling through projects, especially people, you know, and, you know, you don't remember the address, but you know the visual. When you see it, is there a way to potentially add that, like, yep, that's the one I'm looking for, I remember the picture, you know, kind of thing?
Certainly on the project page, we can add, you know, kind of a header picture. And whether that's, I mean, most of the graphics we get are like site plans, but we could do like a Google map image or something.
Or should we include us a rendering of the building?
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, something that, that kind of helps people find their way if they don't remember the address.
On the list of projects, on that current cases page, that would be something I have to investigate. You know, in the same style of co-urbanize, where you have like a little picture and then the link. I'd say it's probably possible, but I just have to figure out which widget.
Yeah, not, not kind of a deal breaker, I'm just kind of wondering exactly how compatible, you know, they, they are. I just like, I like the idea of everything being in one place.
I only have two big concerns with moving over to the town website. One is, I would want somebody to sit down and take the time to move the, the files, to copy the files that are on co-urbanize into pages on the town website, so that somebody decides, hey, I want to find out what, whatever happened with the, that project, you know, the lanterns off of Chestnut Street. It's nice if they can go and find the documents, even if it's been approved five years ago. People are still curious and go to look at those. And if those get moved over to the town website, which I realize is taking some time to do, that would be good to preserve that. The other is, I know the town manager or the selectman used this as part of the downtown planning a year or so ago. And I would want the town manager to be made aware that we're talking about doing this. Because he may want to keep the, the overall service for reasons unrelated to us using it for projects.
I, I, I agree 100, 100%.
Listen, I mean, we've talked about this a couple of times, does he have an idea about this already?
He has an idea, I'm talking about this, and I, and the planning board's talking about this. You know, he hasn't said, you know, I think he was letting this conversation kind of continue with the planning board before he kind of, kind of weighed in. I think he like, you know, he's used co-urbanize in the past, I think everyone knows about it. It's, it was a good, it's a good way to communicate with the public. And so, but I can, I can follow up with him and, and try to get an email or a comment from him concerning this.
Like, I think there's so many, so many times that we're directing people back to the town website, like, it's, it's there, you just have to, you know, they're looking for, when is DPW picking up, you know, it's on the website.
It's on the website.
You know, so if we can get people, I think, always going back to one website, one place, even if, you know, I think that's, I think that's the best thing, you know.
I also think in general, too, that like, your average person is not like in this stuff every day. Like, this is their first place to think, to look to, is to go to the town website.
Ashland, that's it, yeah.
I would be inclined to look there first, before I would know about these other things.
And I think always, the, the town had a link to co-urbanize on the direct website. But, you know, it's, it's one of those things. It's a, it's a, it's a cost, it's here. How do, how do we, you know, if we want to continue with it, great, you know, we can kind of do that.
I think we should, like, because I talked to, talked to Michael Herbert about it, see how he feels about it. But, but I think it's, you know, I think maybe it's time to utilize the website and save the costs, save the time of resources of having to direct co-urbanize.
I would personally say, you know, either, it's either gonna go one way or the other. I would not want to say we're gonna do both. Because I think that's a waste, I think that's a waste of time. I think we should either say, let's stick with it, we're gonna charge applicants $450. That's the cost of doing business in the town of Ashland. We're gonna use co-urbanize, and we're gonna use it, and we're gonna put a direct link on the planning board's website to say, here it is, go see the information, comment X, Y, and Z. Or we're gonna say, you know what? $450, we're gonna shift the fees around, and we're gonna put everything on the town website, and we're gonna maintain it, and we're gonna take, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna manipulate, we're gonna post things, and it's gonna come be controlled by the town.
Yep, my inclination is to do the latter.
Okay.
Is that, that seems to be, yeah. So do we need to vote on that, or should we just?
No, I think at this point, I think, I think we, I think I need to, you know, look at it a little bit deeper and, and talk to the town manager before the, the board votes on it. But I think I, I, from, just from your conversation, I think I know which direction we're leaning. And, and we can kind of move forward.
Alright. That said, it is now a few minutes after 7:45. So I will reopen the public hearing for site plan review for 310, 320 Pond Street. This is continued from September 12th. I don't believe I need to re-read the public hearing. I don't believe I need to re- reread the public hearing notice, because I did that at the first meeting, and so this is a continuation of that. So if the applicant would like to um uh give us a very quick review of what's going on, and then uh go into what has changed from last time, that would be really helpful.
Again, for the record, uh my name is Nathan Mahoney with Labor Engineering. Here tonight uh with the applicant to provide an update and some additional information relative to the proposed project at three ten, three twenty Pond Street. I appreciate everybody's time again tonight. I just want to kinda give a quick uh update relative to some plan modifications that have been done since the uh last submission, and just kinda run through uh some general updates relative to other additional information that's been provided to the board. Uh so first off, I did wanna just uh backtrack and uh just update that the applicant has been speaking with the town staff. Um and the fire department in particular, and a fire sprinkler system will be required for the building. So therefore, the the building's gonna stay at the hundred and forty-five seats as originally proposed in the application. There was discussion last time about potentially reducing that down to ninety-nine, but it's gonna stay with the one forty-five. And they are going to install a sprinkler system in the building uh to meet code and the requirements of the town. Uh additional changes have been made to the plan. There's a new exterior vestibule shown on the front. This is due to provide a little bit of additional space inside the building, as well as there are some additional uh code uh issues with the current interior vestibule. So that's gonna be removed and replaced with a new exterior vestibule. This does result in some additional sidewalk and landscaping directly at the front entrance. Uh and does result in the loss of two parking spaces, however, the site is still compliant with the zoning uh code for the number of required spaces. As mentioned at the last meeting, we were looking at revisions to the loading area that was originally shown. Uh it's gone back more in line with what was originally there, or is what's originally there now on the site. And uh the operations are gonna maintain as described where the loading will be at the back of the building. The loading area has just been reshaped to maintain more of what's there currently today. As noted in the peer review letter from GCG, uh the length of the loading area is less than sixty-five feet in length, as required under zoning. Uh all the other dimensional requirements for the loading area are compliant with zoning. As part of that response letter to GCG and the revised plans, we provided a truck turning movement, showing that the box trucks can come in, enter back into the loading area, and can unload there without blocking any of the other traffic in the area. And as part of that uh response and diagram we provided, we also requested a formal waiver from that requirement, specifically just for the sixty-five foot length, uh because of the use of the box trucks, we don't really need that length to um accommodate the proposed use. Uh one other item noted in the GCG letter was relative to the existing spaces along Pond Street, and in particular, these ones here. The spaces are roughly nine by eighteen in size, or nine by twenty, as required by code. As discussed at the last meeting, the applicant has intended to keep most of the existing parking as it is today, it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition. As such, if a waiver's required to maintain that existing condition, we'd like to formally request that waiver. But we're not sure that that's actually necessary, it was an item that was flagged in the peer review letter, so we'd like to formally request that waiver if it is required. Uh along with the changes and the response to the GCG peer review letter, we also submitted an additional letter uh addressing comments received and discussed at the last hearing between the board and and the neighborhood members that were here. We have reached out to the owner to discuss these comments as well, and their feedback and input has been included in that letter. I just wanna kinda summarize some of the general topics that were discussed. Uh one, the the owner has gone out and replaced the stop sign that's missing at the exit to Spyglass Hill. Actually drove by the site before coming here tonight, that's installed and in, so they've gone out and they replaced that as requested. Relative to traffic and traffic flow for the site, there were a couple of different comments. I'll touch on each kind of quickly here. The first was the comment or the question on potentially closing the curb cut on Spyglass Hill. Uh we have reached out to the owner, and it's our understanding there are legal uh commitments in place with deeded rights of access from Spyglass Hill through that entrance, and at this point in time, those, is our understanding that those rights cannot be changed. So there's legal, other legal rights besides the owner, um and um the applicant will have new legal rights to come across that that are permitting or prohibiting us from closing that entrance. Uh in addition, as discussed last time, I just wanna reiterate, based upon the limited circulation in and out of the site, in particular, the right in, right out for Pond Street, uh we recommend that it stay open for ingress and egress for emergency vehicles, particularly fire, EMS, things of that nature, to make sure there's proper ingress and egress for those emergency vehicles. We did also discuss and reiterate that Mass DOT is finalizing their plans for the major improvements to the one twenty-six Pond Street corridor that'll include a roundabout at the intersection of Pond Street and Spyglass. That's based upon Mass DOT's review of the area, um and we're taking into consideration that they're they're doing the appropriate traffic counts and safety modifications that they need to do, and we feel that that will be a big improvement to the area. Uh we did also wanna note that in the GCG peer review letter, uh they did particularly state that they did not feel that there would be a negative impact on traffic based upon the proposed application uh as submitted. And that um, excuse me, that they did note that obviously there would be additional traffic discussions if the board wished, but they didn't feel that there would be a negative impact. And the last one on circulation was using the kinda tertiary exit or access from Elliot Street. Again, that parcel's owned by a separate entity. Based on discussions with the owner for three ten Pond Street, the only access rights over that parcel are a cross-access agreement between the two owners. And it's highly unlikely that they're gonna change the nature of that agreement to allow a lot of additional traffic across their parcel. Also, looking at that entrance there, it's a pretty narrow paved driveway, and there are a lot of vegetation and a relatively three to four foot high concrete retaining wall at the entrance that prohibits site distance kind of exiting the site. It's it's, so it's not a very well-suited entrance for a lot of additional traffic beyond what's going in and out there today, and then potential, you know, emergency vehicles that may need to get in. And the the last topic that was kind of discussed uh was relative to refuse pickup. The commitments that were made by the applicant at the last meeting relative to locking the traction closure and limiting the pickups to the seven to seven hours, those commitments were included in the revised plans that were submitted on both the site plan and on the details, so that those commitments are formalized on the plan themselves. And we did also speak with the owner about the other trash bins on the site. They did note that they will contact the trash haulers directly and get them, direct them to pick up between the hours of seven to seven. So they have made that commitment to reach out to them to try to correct any of those those issues that might be going on with the after-hours uh pickup or early hour pickups. And lastly, we met with DRC last night, I know there's a couple of members here tonight that may wish to speak to it. Meeting went well, uh closed, they didn't ask us to come back, they said they were gonna write a recommendation with their findings to the board. Three site plan items that I believe we will be addressing as part of that are additional landscaping by the cooler in this area here where we're currently showing grass, will be some sort of low-growth ground cover or shrubs, but uh we have no issue or objection having that in the plans as a condition of approval. Uh additionally, adding a bollard at the back here for additional protection to the court um with the loading vehicles backing in and out of the loading area. And lastly, we were asked to look at providing a sidewalk connection on street. So we did evaluate that, um and it is feasible. Uh we can provide a sidewalk connection roughly in this area here that will eliminate one parking space come across in the lineup with the concrete that's in the front. So again, one more parking space, but we're still in compliance with zoning after that change.
Crosswalk.
Correct. So we would stripe out one of the existing spaces as a no parking, five-foot wide crosswalk, five-foot wide concrete sidewalk from both Pond Street and uh on the site here, they would be ADA compliant. So that's that's really an update to to where we are. Uh again, those three items are acceptable to, you know, uh from our perspective for a condition of approval. Uh they're not reflective in the plan, obviously, 'cause we met with the DRC last night. But that's a quick update to where we stand. I can go into more detail on some of the comment letters that were submitted if necessary, or if there's additional questions, but happy to to answer anything that you you might have tonight.
One quick thing, on the pre-existing parking, uh that's, I think you said, one foot too short?
It's nine by eighteen, I believe code's nine by twenty.
Okay, so it's two feet too short.
Correct.
We can't give a waiver for a building code issue, and so if that's an issue, it's, we can give.
That's that's in zoning.
It's a zoning code.
It's a zoning code.
Uh we can't waive zoning unless unless it specifically says we can.
Well, it's a, it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition.
Pre-existing.
Correct.
I I don't know if you're, if there's a requirement to bring everything up to compliance for this kind of project or not. It's not a big deal to me, but I I just wanna make sure we're not letting you do something that's beyond our authority to let you do.
Typically, and from my read of of the Ashland zoning, the pre-existing non-conforming conditions or use as a thing of that nature are allowed as long as you're not making them less conforming to the bylaw.
That is usually the case, uh though in some cases with a new, with the the new commercial, you might, it's possible you're losing some of that right to the pre-existing non-conforming, I don't know, I'm not an expert on that. So I just, it's it's something we need to check, but but if if you're right that it can just be pre-existing non-conforming and go forward with that, that's fine, but I don't think we could give you a waiver on that. That's my my quick take, um and um, you know. Someone's welcome to tell me I'm wrong, but.
So just a quick, uh town planner, Peter Matzek, uh my read on it, it's a pre-existing non-conforming, they're not making it any worse than it is. So I, but in my eyes, it can continue. That's what, that would be my read on it.
So if the um, if you did bring those up to code, and it says in here that the current spaces are are seventeen feet, so they're three feet short.
They're they're seventeen and a half to eighteen feet.
Okay.
That they vary, and it's it's plus or minus based upon the measurements in the field.
So so that would mean taking, and and that, in your uh plan there, that would mean pushing into that uh green space on the left-hand side probably by five feet, if it's, if you're two and a half feet short, right? So it'd be pushing pushing those spaces deeper into that, is that what you?
Correct. Correct, and it would potentially impact this proposed space that's at the end there as well.
Okay.
Can you show us which spaces we're talking about again?
The the ones, the ones that referenced in the GCG letter are the ones in this area here.
Okay, so.
Where there's the the single bay of parking next to the drive-out.
Oh, so they're not the ones that are going vertically on on the page there in the can, in the dark gray shading?
These here?
Yes.
No, those are proposed and those are conforming with zoning.
So are you saying that, I'm sorry, are you saying that there's only like five spaces that are?
The only ones they reference are the ones here, and they reference what I thought you were talking about was pushing this pavement out on this edge here.
Okay, sorry, my misunderstanding.
Yeah. So maybe you should um potentially list those as, you know, compact cars only, I see sometimes listed on spots, which just
We could put signage there.
Advertising, these spots are a little undersized. Might be a wise thing to do. I I don't know if that's, or if we just have too much signage around and we shouldn't bother.
Paint it on the foot, on the spot.
I'm not, I'm not a fan of lots of extra paint, but.
There's a couple of options, painting the space, or you can put one sign on each end of the bay of parking that's designated as compact, so you limit the number of signage, you you know, compact parking with a couple of arrows that designates those spaces.
And no one will pay attention anyway, those parked there. Park a bus there.
I don't know that people, yeah, I don't know if people care about two to three feet on a parking space. I think they're more concerned about the width of the parking space.
Yeah, the width is conforming, it's nine feet, so.
And there's nothing, no parking behind it, so.
Correct, and that space behind it is about eighteen and a half feet, so there's there's plenty of room to back up and maneuver.
Yeah, it's probably okay. Speaking of parking, I, it's off your site, but I notice uh to, down below that, I'd say there, it looks like it's set up for a bunch of parking there, but there's no parking noted, it's just open asphalt.
Most, most of the striping's missing at this point in time, it's really not well delineated. Uh so when the surveyors went through, they picked up the spaces that they could physically see. So there are some limited islands and and light poles shown, but a lot of the striping um wasn't visible at the time. And when they did the survey, this this wasn't fully complete, and we're working on it, so.
My thought is, if your parking fills up, that's one a place where some people may choose to park. Uh so you may wanna have a discussion with the property owner of, are they putting something else there? Or should they re-stripe those back to the old site plan so that uh it's clear, yes, people can park here?
We can certainly ask that they go out and refresh the the pavement striping that was there previously.
'Cause you're, you know, on a busy night, people will park there.
Sure.
So that should be repainted.
That's 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 an easy request to ask of the the owner.
Yeah. It's not a big one.
And for the the loading area, which, you know, the the code is twelve by sixty-five feet, and you have twelve by forty, are you saying that you don't ex- you don't expect any uh semi-trucks to be coming in and trying to back up into that space? It's just box trucks or?
Correct, they stated at the last hearing that the um loading vehicles, delivery vehicles are anticipated to be box truck style. So those as shown in the diagram submitted can back in and they'll fit in that area without any impact to circulation.
That's kind of guesswork, but if what, if if that doesn't happen sometimes, is it, how how does that loading happen? It's just particular times of making sure that that there's loading and unloading at um times of day when it's not busy? If if you have a truck coming that's larger than those dimensions, or making sure appropriate personnel are out there to direct traffic or?
Well, I can let the 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 future owner speak to that a little bit more, but I believe the intent is that the deliveries are gonna be box truck style, and there is an intent for anything larger than that.
I think, I think also, you could put a condition, if it was an eighteen-wheeler, it would be between the hours of, you know, nine and eleven in the morning, where obviously the restaurant would be either closed or probably would have the 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 most, I would say, less activity than at five o'clock at night, when it would be uh less appropriate for a eighteen-wheeler to make a delivery.
And that, depending on preschool or whatever that is there.
Daycare hours.
In daycare hours.
Make sure that's not conflicting with dropping off.
Drop off and pick up.
Kids and cars and semis.
Yeah, I think I, I think I, I think a condition would be appropriate for that.
It's it's kinda that good neighbor thing, you know, yeah, it's not a big deal, but how do you be a good neighbor, you know, to the the businesses next door?
You probably are gonna be all box trucks, but you never know, someone may send a semi because he's got two other stuff.
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Wait, are we ready for public comment at this time?
Yeah.
Okay, uh so if anybody from the public has a comment, you do need to come up to the podium so that people from home can hear, uh but now would be a good time.
My name is Nancy Berry. I've lived at One Trail Sideway for um better part of thirty years, and I had a couple of uh I guess you'd say real life expectations. That curb cut, that the owner will not comply to changing the curb cut. And I wanted to know um why they won't comply. I mean, what is, what is that and why? And is there a means to appeal that decision? I mean, is that just a done deal, or is that something that can be appealed?
Yeah, if I'm understanding what the applicant has said, the uh the owner of the larger property uh has agreements to keep that open that are, that probably involve the other tenants on the site. And so there are other, it would require a number of parties to be involved to close it, and the applicant is basically saying, this is And so there are other, it would require a number of parties to be involved to close it, and the applicant is basically saying, this is outside my control, and the owner of the property doesn't sound interested in doing it if I heard correctly. And can I see a nod, yes or no, amongst?
That's a relatively accurate account, as my understanding, speaking with the owners, that those rights that are there cannot be changed at this time. Also, just to reiterate, we do think it's good practice to keep that open for ingress and egress for emergency vehicles, because of the limited right turn in and out from Pond Street. So, and I know that as part of the pre-filing tech review meeting that we had, fire department has looked at this, and they do, or they are acceptable to the existing curb cuts that are there. They didn't ask for anything to be closed or modified, so they're happy with the circulation as it is. If we went and closed that, I think it would be most likely an issue with the fire department and EMS trying to get in and out of the site, so.
Thank you. A follow-up to that, that particular curb cut, the reality is, there is no way an eighteen-wheeler could navigate that curb cut, because it's tight. It goes immediately, it's almost a forty-five degree angle, you go right, and then you go left, I mean, it would be an impossibility. So when we talk about an eighteen-wheeler, that's not going to happen. I mean, I feel sorry for the person driving the car, or the truck. So having lived there and dripping that curlicue when it was Blockbuster, and then when it was something else, and Sears, that would be a no-go. Because that would, what would happen is they'd get hung up, because it's tight, and it's not conducive to an eighteen-wheeler, really. And how big, Nathan?
How big is a box truck? I don't know. What is a box?
They're generally less than forty feet in length, they're approximately that size. And then to touch on the eighteen-wheeler from Spyglass, I believe there's actually a sign posted out there right now that says no truck entry. So there wouldn't be any intent on bringing them in from there, we'd be bringing them in from Pond Street regardless of the size of the vehicle.
That's what it shows on the plan, the flow.
Yeah, I believe off the corner here, there's a sign that says no truck entry.
Is there also no truck exit?
That, I don't recall seeing, no, but that's certainly additional signage that we could add to.
Might not be a bad idea.
Get trucks onto Pond Street going the other way. I'd need to discuss that with the owner, I know just routing, you're sending all the trucks out, and they can only take a right out of the site.
That, I can see that being a problem.
A routing issue, but, I mean, that's certainly something we could discuss with the owner, I don't want to put the restriction that's going to hurt some of the other tenants that are on the site.
Otherwise, we need to make sure that that's safe for trucks to exit, as well as?
Certainly, I mean, relative to what the existing uses use, obviously the childcare is, it's pickup-drop off, it's family vehicles. The restore, I'm not sure on the size of the vehicles that they use, but, I mean, relative to the tenant, or the new tenant coming in, I believe it would be, you know, acceptable condition, saying that their traffic has to be in and out of Pond Street, relative to deliveries.
Okay.
I did have a question, and forgive me if this has been discussed, but who is the owner? We're talking about the owner, who is the owner?
When we talk about the owner, we're talking about the owner of the overall property.
Yeah.
I don't know who that is.
Parsons Management Group.
Parsons?
Parsons Management Group, yep.
Thank you, Peter. So, I had, I guess this would be for George, how are you? The, how, I'm not familiar with the restaurant business, I was a waitress years ago when I was nineteen, I was a terrible waitress, by the way. And, but how many trucks do you anticipate coming and going on a daily basis, a box truck? So there's nothing really, so it's an SUV, and then you go to a box truck, is there's no intermediate to that? Yeah, so first question is, how many in and outs do you anticipate, how many truck deliveries?
More than two a day, it's not every day.
It's not every day?
Mondays and Thursdays.
Okay, thank you. And, what's the first step in construction, in terms of either interior or exterior? I mean, when, what's the first thing that's going to happen when things get rolling?
Are you asking me?
Yes, and when, or Nathan, do you know when?
I mean, it's really kind of up to the owner, how they want to face construction, depending upon when they would break ground. They might start with the exterior to get things rolling, and get the exterior of the site squared away, since it's a limited amount of exterior work, and then focus on the exterior of the building and the interior of the building. That would be, I believe, ideal, but depending upon when construction starts, it might make more sense to do some of the building renovations first, but relative to timing specifics, I defer to the owner with more information.
Thank you, just a couple more questions. I was a little confused about the Mass DOT review, and did they give, did they provide some kind of a timeframe?
So I can speak to that, Peter Matzek, town planner, so Mass DOT, the town of Ashland about ten years ago got on the Mass DOT Transportation Improvements Project List to, I would say, redevelop the entire corridor of 126 from the Framingham Line, all the way down through the Holliston Line. Over the past decade, the town has hired a company called Green International Incorporated, who are traffic engineers, and they have worked on the town's behalf to redesign 126 roadway as a whole to the twenty-five percentile. And then you're on the Mass DOT list, and you're really fighting against about a hundred cities and towns in metro Boston, really going after a large portion of federal transportation dollars. The town of Ashland did receive, and is earmarked about, I would say, sixteen million dollars to redevelop 126. And that project is actually going to happen fairly soon, right now, Mass DOT is in the process of finalizing all land acquisitions. And the right-of-way agents have been up and down Route 126 with, I would say, obtaining property sign-off. And so this project will hopefully go out to bid with state funds, I would say, hopefully this winter, and through the spring, I would say. It's a Mass DOT project, Mass DOT owns the project, they are going to be the property managers, they have funded the project through the Transportation Improvement Project Program. And they are going to hire a contractor, or approve state contractor, to come in and to, I would say, construct the redesign of 126. And this redesign, I would say, has been happening with the, on the town's behalf, started on the town's behalf, then it granted over to Mass DOT, once it really hits a certain step, with Green International designing the project. Public comments, I believe before my arrival four months ago in the town of Ashland, that Green Companies in the town of Ashland had multiple public hearings regarding the roadway layout. And the process has, you know, was set forth in the process, I would say, so this project is moving forward, it's funded by Mass DOT, and hopefully it will start, I would say, within the next calendar year.
Okay, great. Going to go back very quickly to the curb cut as it is right now, are there any plans at all to widen it, or is it going to stay exactly as it is?
The curb cut from Pond Street?
From Spyglass Hill, going in, as if we're going to, you know, the restaurant, say, I'm here, I'm coming down Spyglass Hill.
Yep.
And I'm going to go to George's Restaurant, and I'm going to take a right at that, unless I'm off, that, you're calling that a curb cut?
Yep.
Right? So are they going to change that in any way? I just foresee that being a problem.
So right now, looking at that, the Mass DOT's project line stops short of the curb cut off of? Off of Spyglass.
So it stays the same?
Yeah, it stays the same, and the applicant has not been talking about making any changes, it's off their site, but they did get the new stop sign put up that was missing.
So that area is not going to change in any way, expanding or?
Right.
Anything?
It's part of this plan.
Okay.
This plan is making no changes to that, and Route 126 redesign is doing nothing to that.
Got it, okay. Are we going to talk about soundproofing and things like that, windows and such, or is that later on?
You can bring up any questions you have.
I had a question regarding the windows that are lovely, and I don't, are they going to be replaced, existing windows, with some kind of nice double-pane glass window? That's my last question, I'm curious what all is going to happen to the windows for noise, because the other thing is, Nathan? The sound goes up the hill, I mean, I'm in the house, okay, and Paul had mentioned, we can hear the kiddies playing, which is a lovely sound. What's not so lovely is, you know, a lot of congestive noise, so.
Understood.
So from inside, what all is projected to help with the windows? And also, are you anticipating putting up any type of soundproofing fencing, so that we can be protected from the noise? And I'm saying this because I have a real vested interest in noise, we bought our place because it was beautiful, and it had nature and all of that. So to diminish what we have is not so terrific to me, okay, and you've done a great job, but forget the questions.
Oh, no, no, it's quite all right. Yeah, so relative to the existing windows, it's my understanding that the existing windows are double-pane already, they are going to stay. They're going to work the changes to the architecture around those windows, and basically repaint the trim and so forth to match the color with the new building, to make it work with the new architectural style. But my understanding is the existing windows are double-paint. Relative to the soundproof fencing, there's not a lot of room on site to install something like that, nor would I think it would help, given the elevation difference between the neighbors and the site. Sound generally wants to travel up rather than out, I know those types of things will work good, you know, directly adjacent to, you know, the highways and things of that nature, where you're going to block the rushing sound of the traffic going by some adjacent residences. But the elevation difference between the two, I don't think it would help at all to reduce any noise. That being said, I know George has made some commitments at the last meeting, and some discussions on that, basically stating that we don't feel like there's going to be relatively any noise impact to the neighbors in the area. We have agreed relative to the trash pickup and the locking of the traction closure to help reduce any of that potential after-hour noise, or illegal dumping procedures that might be coming along that have occurred in the past.
Hi, Mike Allen, Remax Executive Realty, I'm working with the applicant to purchase the building. I just, logistically, I don't know, I mean, if the road leaving Spyglass will handle a box truck leaving, I think logistically it makes more sense to do it that way. Only because you're going to have the trucks back in here, and when they go to leave, they're going to have to turn either in this parking space, or somehow pull into our space and then back back out. And you're introducing parking spaces, traffic, so if it doesn't make sense, because of the way the road is designed, then we'll figure out a way to work around it. But I think just from a logistics standpoint, it might make sense to leave it, allow trucks to exit that way.
We'll want to check on, you know, turning radiuses of what makes sense, and have that verified, as to whether that makes sense to have those trucks leaving that way or not.
Hi, good evening, Nancy Purple-Lary, 14 Fatima Drive. I'm here to support the proposed establishment in the vacated Blockbuster Building. Having gone to Bill's Pizza for over twenty-plus years, born and raised in Holliston, I admire a family-run business. I come from an entrepreneurial family that has instilled in us how important it is to follow our dreams. Sorry. What also is steep with me is that this establishment has hired Ashland workers, I mean, Ashland schoolkids, Hopkinton schoolkids, surrounding towns. My son was fifteen when he got his first job there. I am, I've worked in restaurants all my life, including Stones, right next door, they're still in business, great owners. One last thing, sorry, I'm sorry. Every time I drive by Blockbuster, I think to myself, what needs to go in there? Being a Realtor, being an entrepreneur family, I can't think of a better place than a family meeting place. When you walk into Bill's Pizza in Hopkinton, that has been around forever, I've known, until it was made into this beautiful restaurant. I can't imagine another place for our youth to get their first jobs in, thank you.
I have one question, we have a rendering here, and I noticed it says West Boylston. I'm wondering why we have this, what exactly this represents?
That is the proposed rendering for the front view from the building, from Pond Street towards the building. I believe that was a holdover left on there by the architect, but that is the proposed architecture for this site.
Is it the correct branding of what you're thinking of this time?
It is the correct branding.
And this has not yet been reviewed by Design Review?
This was presented to Design Review last night.
Okay, and did they propose changes to this?
I believe that they were set with the architecture as proposed.
I'm sorry, where did you get this from?
It's on the bottom of our packet. Do we, can we do that? So I guess, depending on the timing, then, the connecting sidewalk and all that would have to be, may be open before that 126 happens, right? So, is that just written in, that when they redo the 126, they connect the sidewalk, or do they?
So the?
That's something that has to be included, but probably, I don't know, that's part of the final plan, and then if they can't do it until they do the highway.
I think that would just be a condition, you know, I think we can look at it and say, you know, if the owner has, you know, is committed to make a sidewalk and connect it to 126, then obviously we'd want that to happen after the 126 improvements are made.
Or in coordination with.
Or in coordination with, and I can think, that's an appropriate condition to put within a decision of the planning board. There is.
They're changing all, I don't know how much we're doing today, so.
Yeah, so I think.
You don't want to waste your money now and have to dig it up later, but, yeah.
I'm sure that's what he wanted to hear.
You don't want to waste his money.
I think that the phasing's appropriate, and we can certainly share the final approved plans with DOT, so they know what the intent is, so that they can make any modifications that they may need to do to their plans, to note the interface between the two projects.
So just beginning as a town planner, I believe this is a great use for the site, it's a vacant building, it's site plan approval, so there's no special permits here. To my, you know, looking through all the engineering and the review, everything is to par, I would say, at this point. And I would say it's up to the board to move forward, and to close the hearing, and I can, you know, start drafting a decision, and present it to the board at the next meeting. If to do so, or if, you know, if you are requesting more information, we can do that, but I think at this point, it's fairly well-vetted, we've talked about it. The applicant's been through the Design Review process, which I greatly appreciate, and we've taken public comment.
We have not yet seen, as the planning board, the formal response from Design Review Committee.
Correct, it's. Correct, it's, and, and Design Review Committee will be speaking with us after. But I believe we are penned, that report is still pending, however, the Design Review Committee met last night.
My, my personal thought would be to leave the public hearing process open until we get that. But you could go ahead and draft up a proposed decision and we might be able to at the next time, close the public hearing and, and then vote on a decision.
Okay. I think we can do that, so we can.
The other thing, there's a mention of some requests for waivers. I don't see in our packets, though there's a lot of paperwork and I may have missed it, a specific list of what the waivers are that they are asking for.
Okay.
Do we have, do we have a specific list?
They, they are included in the response to the GCG comments. Since we are looking at keeping the hearing open and continuing, we can pull those out into a separate document and put that on a, just a separate waiver request document that can be submitted to the board.
Might, it might make sense to just go over that list.
Sure.
Right now, just to make sure that we are all on the same page.
So.
For the, for that, because the, the waivers are an important issue.
So there, there were only two discussed. The one relative to the existing parking, again, it seems like that everybody's acceptable to leaving them the way that they are today because they're pre-existing condition, we're not making them any worse. The spaces are nine feet, there's eighteen feet of, of drive aisle behind it. So that was the first, was second, technically the second one that was discussed. The first one was discussed was the length of the loading area being forty feet instead of sixty-five feet. Those were the two that were discussed. I think the loading area is the only one that would formally be required.
Okay, and, all right, so is the, from, from the sense of the board, are any of these, are these issues that are going to be a problem, are we okay with this?
I think they've been discussed, yeah.
Just want to make sure we don't have any surprises going forward.
Excuse me, just for public record, those would be comments number four and comment number six in Bowler Engineering's letter dated September nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
I think it also says, on comment five, there's a comment about the, the cooler being added to the building, to buy thirty-six cooler. And I don't know if we've seen, because I couldn't find the drawings, but, I mean, unless that's the architectural rendering that you were referring to, I thought usually when a rendering, they're talking about looking at it face on. So I didn't know if that was going to be part of.
So, so the, the cooler is back here?
Mm-hmm.
The only rendering for the building that was submitted is, is the one that we referenced earlier.
Okay.
The design and the look of that was fully discussed with the DRC at the meeting last night.
So we should, we would hear about that as part of the.
Okay.
Understanding that next time.
And so this is the Pond Street rendering that doesn't show, but, but the main entrance is actually facing spyglass where people would actually come in and out.
Correct.
Okay. That being the case, we should probably continue this till the next meeting?
Yeah, October tenth is the next meeting.
Continue this to October tenth. You can draft a decision.
Mm-hmm.
And we would most likely close the hearing and vote on that decision unless there's something we're not expecting from Design Review.
Okay.
And unless, unless they're going to incorporate it on the plans and give us new plans, then we would want to condition anything that Design Review has, such as the, the shrubbery landscaping behind the cooler and the bollard to protect that from being hit. As, as the trucks are backing in and out, which I, I agree is a, a very good idea.
And the, the sidewalk connection.
So why don't we get a new plan, just put together outlining the bollard.
Sure.
What was mentioned and then that can be referenced in the decision. And then I can draft, start drafting that in the next two weeks, then we can move forward.
Yeah, if, if we're looking at new plans, I can incorporate all, all three of those items into it.
I think that makes a lot of sense then.
Yeah, I mean, we're out till at least ten-ten?
Ten-ten, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
So we can do that and provide the formal request for the continuance similar to the last meeting.
I would appreciate that.
We've got several other things going on.
We can make this.
Probably do this like eight-thirty or something, because we've got, or do we want to go to eight?
I think.
In case something's continued, because we've got.
I think it would be later because we do have a couple of public meetings stacked up, so I'd say eight o'clock would probably be best.
Yeah.
It's going to be a busy night.
Yeah. I, and I, I wouldn't lay good odds that we would actually start on time on that. It's probably more, would probably be more like eight-thirty, but I don't want to, we tend to schedule it early in case something gets continued.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Will you guys be bringing elevations of the whole building and all that too?
George, would Jay be able to have additional elevations on the building? Ready for that point, for the tenth?
Yeah. It's just boring, yeah. We'd like to see them.
We've already scheduled, we've already scheduled the ever source and the eighty-one.
And when it's built, we go out and hold it up?
Okay, it's fine.
I was just seeing.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think eight o'clock is good.
Okay.
That being the case, I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to continue this till eight o'clock on October tenth, eight P M.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and you oppose, that passes five-zero.
All right, so we have a game plan moving ahead, we'll get the continuance, update a plan, and I can start drafting the decision.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you so much, I'll see you guys.
And I know a, a number of people are probably leaving now. I'll ask everyone to, if you, if you are leaving, be, do so quietly because we have a number of other items on our agenda. We have a, the next item would be the discussion with the Design Review Committee.
So yeah, so I'll set this up a little bit. So myself and Emma have had a couple of conversations with the Design Review Committee. The chairman, Patrick, is here. We have not formally met, but we've met over the telephone and we've had a couple of conversations. And I will say that since I arrived here in the town of Ashland, I was just reading the bylaws, looking through the responsibilities. I would say the roles and responsibilities that is governed via the bylaws to the Design Review Committee. And really, what is the responsibility and the roles and responsibilities of the planning board regarding site plan review? And so Patrick have, has asked, I would say, to just come in and have a conversation with the planning board concerning the roles and responsibilities of site plan review. If I'm mistaking anything, please correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, if you want to step up to the microphone. However, that's how I've interpreted a lot of the conversation. And, and so Patrick is here tonight just to talk about, you know, what is happening. I would say from my standpoint, as, as, as dirt town planner, as director of planning, is when a application, and the way I read is when a application kind of is submitted to the town, the, along certain corridors in the downtown, along the one twenty-six corridor, along the one thirty-five corridor, projects are, are therefore sent to Design Review Committee. Design Review Committee notifies the butters and they actually can hold a public hearing. It says that they do so and that typically usually happens prior to the planning board, to, to the project's arrival at the planning board. So, so an applicant is really kind of meeting with Design Review Committee, the pla, you know, prior to reaching the planning board. I think which is great because it, you know, is, is keeping things moving. Then obviously if the project had to go in front of the Conservation Commission, that would also happen too. But on a separate note, really, the bylaws, or the zoning bylaws speaks to two different boards. It's mostly, it's really all of the planning board. However, we do, with the town of Ashland, did adopt the Design Review Committee in what they're charged with. And they're charged to looking at the architectural styles of the building. And really, the planning board is, and therefore is, they're also charged to submit a report to the planning board. And the planning board is the, the voting authority, I would say, on site plan review. The design actually falls within site plan review if you kind of look at it. However, I just wanted to kind of set the table a little bit for the discussion. So I'm going to kind of leave it off to Patrick and, and he can fill in some of the blanks. But I think that's where we kind of were within conversations. Emma has been working with the site, I'm sorry, the Design Review Committee. And so really, the planning office is kind of, is, is really working with the two committees. So I think it made sense just for, the Design Review Committee just asked, kind of have a quick meeting, I would say, with the planning board just to kind of go over, like I said, roles and responsibilities.
Actually, and if I can cut in before we start, I looked at the town webpage for the Design Review Committee where it lists the membership. And if that is correct, you have a full membership and nobody's term has expired. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I believe our terms expire in June of two thousand and twenty.
So I, I think they're supposed to be somewhat staggered, but anyway.
They are staggered.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I believe Sarah Hines, myself, I know, I think is June two thousand and twenty. And I believe Bill and Kathy, twenty-one, twenty-one, yeah.
I was surprised that none expired this year, so.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Yep.
Anyway, so I just want to make sure we don't have vacancies that are on us to, to fill at this time, that we're all good on that.
Not at this particular point, so.
That, that has been a problem in the past.
Yep, yep. So Peter just stepped out, but I think, you know, the discussion I had with Peter was a very good one. Some of the, the reasons we wanted to talk to the planning board was that it kind of felt, at least from the past, that decisions were made before the planning, Design Review could get a chance to look at projects. We were sort of, what's the word, Bill? Engaged late in the process. And we had to do a quick, sort of quick hit review. And then we never even would have an opportunity to pass along our report before decisions regarding the project were made. And I believe it might have been some, you know, strong-arming from contractors suggesting they were on a tight schedule or something. I don't really know. But, you know, in the past, you know, we've kind of felt a little bit neglected or underutilized. Everyone on our committee is a licensed architect or has been in architecture for twenty-plus years. We're landscape designers licensed, we've had licensed engineers on our board before. So we're in the design and engineering field as a full-time job. So we feel that we're, we have something to offer, especially since we're town residents, you know. We can tell when a design may be bad or, you know, it doesn't have the town's interests at heart. So, you know, I run the committee, I, you know, I, I meet with the applicants and then what I do is I do open the floor to all the residents. And then in my reports, I, I bring in the resident comments. And I let the planning board know, you know, from the DRC point of view, whether or not the design is good or bad or what has to change. But then I bring in the human aspect of, of residents, because as you know, any project that kind of comes across our table is met with some sort of friction. People usually are afraid of change. So I think with the way our committee is, is we try to encourage or, or put the, not encourage, but, you know, put the town residents at ease, knowing that we're their advocate as well. We're not just some committee that doesn't have a stake in what's being designed in town. So we're here to help. The discussion I had with Peter was that, you know, he can't change the past. He's new, he wants to go by the book, which is great. It was a very positive conversation. We're really excited about that. And in the past several weeks, we've been super activated, I guess, from the past year. And things are going well. But I think, you know, we still wanted to have the conversation with you to let you know that. I think some of the things we're looking for is perhaps when a project comes to your desk, you know, you activate Design Review almost immediately versus like, we have to get this done tomorrow kind of thing. We're all, you know, pretty busy too, so, you know, the more heads up we can get, the better off we are. And additionally, some projects may require a second meeting with our committee because whatever was submitted might not conform to the Design Review guidelines. However, you know, we're kind of, you know, we're not that strict. As architects and designers, we know a good project when we see it and what's presented to us. This past project that you just reviewed, you know, that one architectural elevation, it's pretty slick. It's going to look really nice. So as designers, we have a sense of what the whole building perimeter is going to look like based on that one elevation. However, we've looked at other projects that have not had architects design the presentation. It was basically contractors, it may be a drafter. And we know right off the bat.
Eighty-one.
What's missing and we, we hit them hard, which, which requires the second meeting. So it's a little bit of education on some contractor's part. But, you know, I think, I don't know, am I missing anything, Bill? I don't know what I'm trying to say, other than, you know, we, we're excited to work with the new board, I guess. We're here to help. We're here to, you know, make every single town project that comes across our committee the best it can be. But we, we would request that we get enough time to actually review the projects before any final decisions were made. And additionally, one of the other sort of conflicts that I think happened tonight was you've re-met with the applicant after we just had our meeting last night, so we haven't had a chance to issue our report. So it's sort of one of those things, you know, if, it would, it would have been better if you had had our report before they presented.
Which you'll notice, we kept the public hearing open for that very reason.
Yeah, yeah. But again, that was a good project, so there, there wasn't really any, we didn't have really any issues other than the sidewalk, some, the bollard and the, the bushes, so it was an easy one. But, you know, others are disasters, right? So.
I think regarding scheduling, I think, I think Emma and I in the planning office are going to do the best we can to make sure that you guys, that, that, that your committee, if, you know, if charged through the, through the bylaws, reviews the project, we're going to get to you as soon as possible. You know, I know their lead time, the Design Review Committee's lead time is a little bit shorter than what's prescribed for the planning board, which has to obey or attend to master general law requirements. And so therefore, that's why it's, it's good that, the, it was good foresight, I would say, when the town adopted Design Review guidelines to allow for that shorter lead time with, with the committee because, because of the planning board's lead time. Because we have the two weeks and the newspaper and the butters and the notification. That's, that's just the nature of, I would say, the regulations, so therefore, but I think Emma and I can kind of work together on that, you know, moving forward. And, and like, you know, we're here, you know, kind of going back to the co-urbanizing conversation is, is, it's, we're, we're taking fresh eyes at it. You know, fresh eyes at the, at the process and at the look. So do we want to change something? Let's tweak it. But I think we're going to, you know, my goal is to implement what's in the bylaws. And if the project is going to go to Design Review, we're going to send it to Design Review and we're going to kind of take it through the correct procedural path, I would say. So that's my, that was my goal, then, you know, and I, and I stated that to Patrick.
Yeah. Where, where mistakes were made in the past, as, I've been chair for several years, I want to throw past town staff under the bus instead. But the truth is ultimately, you know, as chair, it's my responsibility. And clearly, I have failed in some cases and I'm sorry. I, and, and I expect I speak for the rest of the board on this, I very much value your input to projects. And I personally am not really good with the aesthetic stuff. And so the, the architectural and landscaping, having somebody who can look out for the town on that, who isn't me.
Yep.
Is really helpful.
So some of the things that we put in our report at the end are recommendations, because all we are is advisory. And our recommendations are usually more than just the project. It also takes into account, is this. It also takes into account, is this project really the right project for Ashland? And it's up to the planning board to weigh those issues, right? Are you going to allow this project to proceed or not, depending on what the impacts are kind of thing, you know? So we put that in there too, to help you make your decisions. And it's completely non-biased. I mean, it's, we, we, you know, it may be a bad project for a butters, but it may be good for the town kind of thing. Or it just may be a really good project that the town needs. But I put all that in there.
We're seeing it the other way around though.
From both perspectives. I add both perspectives. And it's obviously, as an advisor, then I give a little conclusion saying, we recommend this, that, or the other thing. But, you know, we can't force you to make the decision. All we can do is give you the information you need to make the best possible decision. So that's what, that's how we work.
I know when we adopted the bylaw, there was some talk of should this be advisory or should this be, the board had direct authority.
That's right.
In some towns, they do.
Yep.
And the thought was, well, let's make it advisory and see how it goes. Should we change that? I, I throw that out for everyone.
Well, I, so, you know, our.
Yeah, it's something, you know, we've got some experience with this. We know, you guys kind of know what you're doing.
Yeah, but, you know.
There are pros and cons.
So we have a pretty good, we got a pretty good committee now. Could the committee switch over in coming years? And maybe you get someone who's more, I don't know, not.
Different.
Different, and maybe it ends up being a problem. I mean.
Are you, are you comfortable with the role of being advisory? Is that, is that?
Well, so the talk on our committee is that we would like to be more. But perhaps you want to put something in there that says at any given point in time that sort of thing can be removed, should it be warranted.
And also just telling us that might make a difference. Just by telling us that you want to be more involved, because sometimes we just kind of go by what's in front of us. So that makes a difference.
I would just be afraid that somehow, somewhere, the, you know, I'm not saying it would, but let's say our committee somehow gets corrupted or something. And they're doing things for personal reasons or whatever.
My, my thoughts are like going down that path is if, if we were, if it were in the future to go towards binding as opposed to advisory, I think my thoughts are, you know, the, the DRC would need to be hitched to our meetings and need to be at the meetings. Because going that way would create a much longer timeline potentially to get stuff through this process. So I think it would need to be, you know, car inside car, however you want to, whatever, you know. And then, and then, secondly, currently, the committee's appointed by the planning board, we're elected. So, you know, going down the path of what you're saying, I don't know what the right answer is, but I, I think you're on a good line there that it needs, it would need consideration if this were the direction that things would go.
Yeah.
Or, or the other thought is we could, we could strengthen it a little bit and say that the applicants are required to meet all criteria of the design review committee unless the planning board explicitly waves them. So it, it puts a little more teeth into it, but it doesn't.
Right.
But it still gives the planning board ultimate control.
Yep.
And going forward, I think it might be, it, it might be wise to, just as a, how we do business, to tell applicants that that is essentially how the planning board treats the design review committee. That, you know, that whatever the design review committee goes, unless the planning board specifically wants to overrule them for, for good cause.
Yeah, it's funny, because ju- just prior to the meeting, I, I told Joe that, you know, maybe I, maybe I'm, you know, on the wrong board or committee, because, you know, I, I am a registered architect as well. And, and sometimes I feel like my hands are tied. Like I just want to get out my trace and kind of redo this thing for them. But obviously, that's, that's not, that's not my role. And that's, I don't have jurisdiction to do that. So personally, I'm thrilled that there's a whole committee out there, professionals, that are looking at this thing with the same eyes that I'm looking at it with. And, and have that to, to fall back on when I can't, when I'm, when I'm kind of, in a way, not allowed to. It's, it's, you know, not my vote. I've also, I know Sarah Hines, but I've lived in Ashland for about 15 years. And Sarah Hines is the only other architect I know in Ashland, so it's kind of fun to, oh, there's more of us out.
There's a bunch of us.
Some more of us out there hid, hiding, you know, in the community.
Six or eight.
I need to have a little party or something with all the, just, just architects you talk. You guys are not invited. So, so I'm, I'm really all on board with working closely to that committee. Because as, as a, as a, as a professional designer, it is so important about how we kind of shape our world. Not, not for just next week, but for decades and decades into the future. It's huge.
And some of the projects that, sorry about this, but from the past, I think we've probably made 150-year mistakes, right? We're stuck with these buildings and properties. And the only thing that's going to change it is a bulldozer. And what are the chances of that happening, right?
More likely to get an airplane crash.
Yeah. So, you know, I think, I think we have good intentions. I think one of the other things we would, we would like to request is also an expansion of the areas that design review can get involved in. I believe in the guidelines or the bylaws, it mentions, you know, downtown. It mentions portions of Pond Street.
One twenty-five, one twenty-six, one thirty-five downtown, and it's a square footage area, I think.
Yeah. But, you know, the new YMCA is coming in. We are not, that's out of our boundaries, if you will. So I was thinking, maybe we should have our eyes on that. Also, the new, if there is a new safety building coming in.
Mendez, the new safety building.
Yeah, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff we could help you with, you know.
Do we have the authority to say, even if it's outside that, to say, in this case, we want to do a design review? Is that in the bylaw?
I don't see why not. We could work together on this. I do just want, just to kind of, for clarification purposes, reading from the bylaw, I'm not going to go into the, the app of authority. But the areas are the downtown of Pleasant Street, the geographic center of Ashland, including the Ashland Downtown Zoning District, the Route 135 corridor, properties with frontage along 135 and the highway commerce, industrial neighborhood commerce, or wildwood mixed use districts. And then we are also in the Route 126 corridor, property, properties with frontage on 126 in the highway commerce, village commerce, and multifamily zoning districts. Then also properties with projects requiring design review section 9.47 of the zoning bylaws of the codes of Ashland. And thank you so much for Michaela. And regarding, I'm sorry. Emma. So Michaela was the old. So my, oh, Michaela was an old coworker of mine. I'm sorry. I was like, huh? You know it's late. The applications for building permits, including six or more parking spaces, unless the site plan and design review has been endorsed by the planning board after consult, consultation with other boards, departments, and committees, including but not limited to the following: building inspector, board of health, the board of selectmen, town planner, town engineer, water and sewer commission, town manager, conservation commission, highway department, fire department, police department, and the technical review committee. No building permit should be issued for the construction of any of the above without site plan review approval and design approval. So that is probably going to be everything.
Six.
Six parking spots.
Doesn't mention historic districts.
And it doesn't mention historical districts.
Do we have any historical districts?
But if they have six or more parking spots, you're in.
Just full disclosure, I'm actually on the Metro West Board of Directors for the YMCA. So one of the reasons I think they were interested in me joining that board was because of the new building going up in Ashland and having that connection. And obviously, they're very interested in this being a really regional building for the community. So we're not close to that, but, you know, as it goes forward, you know, they're, they're interested in tying in with the community. That's all what they're all about, for that part of it.
No, I, I, I get it. The YMCA is a respectable organization. I don't know. I think, you know, folks on our team, you know, have a special eye for, you know, things that perhaps, you know, having the town background and history that, you know, perhaps a developer wouldn't have. So, I mean, I just think we just bring that little bit of extra experience to the table. And, you know, we're only talking about a report too, so it wouldn't hurt, I wouldn't think. But we would have to expand the bylaw to, to capture those areas, you know.
Pretty much ever, any big project is going to require a design review and therefore, under point four, will get pulled in.
And does that exclude us from inviting them to?
I don't, if it doesn't require a design review, I don't know if they come here, because we're.
I mean, if they had a project that didn't fall under that, and we said, we want to hear from the.
But I don't think it would be coming to us. So I think, I think this pretty much covers everything that would come to us.
And you'd never come to us.
Other than subdivisions.
So I guess some examples of projects that we missed or had no say in whatsoever was Ashland Lumber Expansion.
That didn't come before us. There was no, I, I, I'm just saying, that, that did not come before the planning board.
The issue with Ashland Lumber is they had a fire. And therefore, they were able to simply just go ahead and apply for a building permit.
Is that right?
So it's not a change of use, right?
It wasn't a change of use. If it was a significant change in design, then perhaps they should have. I don't know exactly, but.
Not speaking to the knowledge of the, the, the project as a whole. Typically, when there is an act of nature indoor God, such as a fire, the developer has the right. In the notion to, and they have the right to rebuild and come in and file for building permits. If it's a pre-existing non-conform, even if it's a pre-existing non-conform structure, usually within two years after the act has happened. So typically, that's how that, that process would move forth. But, but regarding that project, I would say is maybe not the best example.
Yep.
Because of the situation and the destruction of fire for that building.
Another one was the apartment complex across from the assisted living place on the road heading into Hopkinton, 135.
Ashland Apartments, I think the name is or something.
That was a 40B, the Ashland Woods. Yes, that was a 40B, so that, it comes to the planning board briefly so that we can make a recommendation to the zoning board. But we don't actually have a say in that other than advisory. So.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, all comprehensive permits go through the zoning board. All 40B, which is also known as a comprehensive permit, under mass state law, go through the zoning board of appeals directly.
So does the language in our bylaw there want to somehow mention projects going through zoning board of appeals?
Yeah.
I would say if it was, if it wasn't triggered, I, I would say.
What in the case of a friendly 40B, though?
Well, in the case of any 40B, the planning board, they're supposed to come before the planning board so that we can make a recommendation to the zoning board. Because they don't have, outside of 40Bs, we're the ones that have the experience on these types of projects as opposed to them. And we could ask the design review committee in these projects to weigh in on that recommendation as well. So, you know, it's just a recommendation, but it would still be something that would make a lot of sense to do in the future.
I would say no. The plan, that this, if I'm reading this correctly, there's no mention of projects which go to the zoning board come in front of you, the design review committee. So I think if we were going to look, start to make amendments to this bylaw, you would probably start with that with the design review committee.
I, I would add five other projects before the planning board or the zoning board of appeals at the request of said board.
Right. And not, not including, you know, single-family residential. Because we, we don't want to get.
You don't want to get blocked on. That's, that you're, that's a.
Exactly. We're talking about, you know.
I would even say all, you know.
Town buildings and apartment buildings and things like that.
Apartment buildings are still residential, so.
No, I would say apartment, but even, you know. Even multi, even multifamily homes above, I would say, four units.
That's right.
I think below four units is, is, you know, I don't know how, how much you want to.
Yeah. No, I think that would, it would be, it would be probably five or six units and above.
Typically, you draw the line at six.
Yeah.
I would say it, throughout zoning bylaws, you know, six is, which breaks. Usually, six is usually the line in the sand.
Yeah.
Yep, I would agree with that.
So if I could for just a second, I, I'm backtracking a little bit to earlier in the conversation. But, you know, I would echo Preston's comments earlier. I mean, I, I've been very impressed with the way, in Peter's short time here, he's been getting things in front of you and making sure they're getting in front of you. And, and, and I regret, you know, in previous years, under previous planners, where maybe that wasn't happening in, in the right order. I value your opinion. I'm not an architect or a designer in that regard. And so I appreciate you guys being there. I appreciate you being willing to spend your time and energy. And, you know, I, I've been actually really pleased the way Peter and Emma have, have kind of run this. And I, I would like to see us kind of continue with that and get your stuff as quickly as possible and get your feedback. So, you know, I guess, you know, and, you know, the, the most referenceable one to me is 128 Main. And, you know, I, I do think, I do think you guys helped to shape that too via, you know, the recommendations that you did provide. I know the timing was not what you really wanted, but.
Yeah.
I, you know, I, I think we tried to get it.
128 Main, you mean the.
Cross the street, the way.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
With the colors.
Anyway, I just, I just wanted you to know that. I do appreciate you guys and, and.
Great.
Look forward to working together more.
Bill, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, hi, I'm Bill Sandwich. I've been at the DRC for about five years.
You're going to stand up and talk to me?
Sorry.
Following up on your saying, we should probably toughen up a little bit, I think. We're, we're a pretty laid-back group. We've been reviewing whatever is put in front of us. Pretty much everything we see is incomplete. And I think we should just reject like that, where we don't see four elevations around the building. If it's not clear what the building is, we should just immediately reject it. Is that all right with you?
Yeah, that's sort of the, that's sort of the discussion we had last night briefly. The guidelines, the design review guidelines actually state what each applicant should be presenting to us. And, you know, we kind of gave these guys a pass last night because their design was designed by an architect. And we could figure, they, they had a really good presentation. And again, we didn't have any comments, but their package wasn't complete. But it seemed like it would be foolish to reject them because it was such a good project. But again, we've had other applicants that the information as outlined in the guidelines that they're supposed to provide us is incomplete. And we kind of just review what we have due to scheduling and we.
Well, the Rodenheiser project, that also was extremely incomplete.
At first, yeah. They, they actually, their second presentation was a lot better. Like 100% better, you know, completely different. And it went in the right direction. The Rodenheiser folks actually listened to us. They took our comments. They seem like they're pretty savvy with what's going on in town. And they, they really want to have a nice project. The butters, obviously, are not too keen on that project or the self-storage place next to the middle school.
You guys saying that you don't want the discretion to reject or not reject? This one, it's not like you were saying, you want to automatically reject them, but.
Well, if they don't have, I think as we move forward, the guidelines specifically say what they're supposed to present to us. And if they don't have everything that's, they're supposed to present, the feeling is, is we should reject them.
And by rejecting, that, that would affect, that would, that would mean.
They reschedule for another time to come back.
And so until they've done that, they haven't fulfilled our ask that they go before you.
They haven't filled the bylaw. Yeah, they haven't fulfilled the boxes, I would say, that need to be checked. for renderings or, you know, external material.
And when they're applying something, that probably needs to be transmitted to them. Let them know that if you don't have all your stuff together, it may take longer than you expect.
If we could find out, cause we're probably gonna have a hea- a hearing between when it's rejected and when they come back, we should have a note for us that design review committee determined that the app, that the DRC application was incomplete and is rescheduled, so we know why it's rescheduled.
Right.
So if we need to turn around and say, "Yeah, we're gonna wait for design review and reschedule them," you know, the...
So a lot of the, you know, and the reason for doing this is some promises are made. It does get written in our report as to what those promises were. But again, it's advisory. We send our report to you and then you have to kind of accept, you know, those promises from the developer. And then what happens is when they build it, none of those promises get brought into the project cause it was never in the submission, right?
That's why usually we wanna put, put your recommendations in as requirements in the decision.
Yep.
As we did on 128, we took it directly from your recommendations and put a lot of that in.
I think even for the restaurant, you know, as they come back on, on ten-ten, I think they should have, I think, they should have all four elevations, cause they, they have added on that cooler and I'd like to see what it looks like, you know? Just to, just to kinda...
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, and so from now on, I, I'd be totally in support that if you're like, "Nope, it looks good, but you gotta follow the directions," right?
Yeah.
I certainly have to.
The presentations, we've made our comments, usually the site colors, materials. And usually the audience comments are zoning. They don't want a three-story building in back of their, in their backyard. And all we can do pretty much is politely listen for a half hour or so. I don't know what can be done about that, really.
That's a tough question. I would say, you know, it's really education piece, you know, I think. And I think that needs, that, that needs to start, obviously with this conversation. It starts with this conversation to build a, build a, I would say a better, can I say, a better relationship between design review committee and the planning board. But it's also education to the public of what the, I would say, what the responsibilities are for each committee. So maybe, you know, we can work on maybe a responsibility, responsibilities, you know, on the website of that nature.
Well, yeah, and so what I do is at the beginning of every meeting, if there's a large crowd or even if there's only one resident, I explain to them how the DRC functions and how we're advisory to the planning board, how we're only looking at site and aesthetics. So, but it doesn't stop the residents. We tried to explain, at least on the, the, the restaurant project, that their project was in a certain footprint in that we had no jurisdiction to talk about the Little S Road going up to Spyglass, but it just, it just went on and on and on and on and on, right? So that's just an example, but that's like every project. They bring up zoning and we try to explain to them that if they have issues, they need to bring it up with other boards, so. But, you know, I at least explained...
Yeah, I don't think we, I don't think, I don't think the planning, speaking for the planning board as a town planner, I don't think there's an easy answer to, I think I, I understand where that's coming from. Sitting in multiple planning board meetings over the years. I, I, I just don't think there's an easy answer for that one.
I'm just gonna keep doing what I'm doing.
I think that's probably the most appropriate thing to do, to tell you the truth.
Is there a master plan in the works for the town?
No. Yeah, I would, I would say, at my, to my knowledge, I know the town, prior to my arrival, the town manager was working on a strategic plan. However, since I've been, I arrived here in town, I can't say I arrived here in town, but four months ago, the strategic plan has been mentioned.
For, for your reference, we had a comprehensive plan committee and it, we disbanded it and we tried to pick up the pieces and it basically failed. Some of the problems were internal town, some of it was we had contracted part of it out to MAPC, but not the whole thing. And then there, the person that was their lead left MAPC to go work for the town of Arlington. And so it was, just everything that could've gone wrong did. And like the housing production plan that they had, had a prediction for school population going one way and the school district's numbers said the populations go the other way. It, it, none of, it just all wasn't coming together. And if, if we were to do a comprehensive plan, we would need to pretty much start over at this point.
Yeah, I think, it's, just speaking for that, that would have to go back, that from a budgeting standpoint, you know, a master plan, a good master plan costs about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars all day long. And, and, and I completed two master plans in my previous two communities. I've been through the process. It's a, it's, it's a very engaging process. But I think the planning board would be a part of that. However, I think that's a greater discussion that needs to start, you know, it really be championed, you know, by the board of selection to town manager. And funding needs to be appropriated. I would say a, a quality level of funding would need to be appropriated for the completion of that plan, is the best way I can say. But, but, and that's where it kinda sits.
Okay. The next thing is, I'll have to look at the storage building on 126 the rest of my life or think around the 135. That's a, it's an ugly building. We had a skeleton crew that reviewed it and we probably should've been a little bit more stringent, I think. Part of that is zoning. It's a big three-story building. That's right on the highway. I guess when you're, you're considering whether our recommendations should be binding, that project right there makes me think that we should get some more practice in.
I think, I think, I think since, you know, Amber and I come on board and we, we've kind of pushed some projects to you and implemented the bylaws, I think, you know, I think it makes sense if there's minor changes to make minor changes, but to at least, you know, keep things going for about a, you know, for six months to a year just to make sure everything is, you know, it, we, both committees can act, I would say, as two well-oiled, you know, machines. And, and we're going through projects together. We're moving things along. I think that's probably the, the best way to, to move forward. So, I think it's very helpful, this conversation. I know it's been helpful for me and, and, and as, as, as projects do progress, I would say.
Up until now, we've been reviewing fences, you know, small projects. So, you know, just now, things are happening in this town, so we're, we're kinda getting up to speed, I think.
I, I, I hope that I'm, I, I have, myself and Emma have a little thing, a little piece to do with that. But, but if all proj, you know, whatever projects meet the four criteria, you know, they'll be going in front of the design review committee.
Great.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much for coming in tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
So they'll be hearing, so I was just saying, for 12 Pond Street, which is an application that's coming before both boarding committee, we're not quite at our optimal scheduling quite yet because the DRC will be hearing 12 Pond on October eighth and it will be opening its public hearing with the planning board on October tenth. So there is kind of a, a short window there and we'll see what happens with both of those meetings. But, yeah, but we are, we're booked in for...
Yeah, I would think on a project of this size, it'll probably be many nights at the planning board and I wouldn't be surprised with several nights with design review.
But typically, just to go back to that point, the planning board meets on the second, fourth Thursday of every month, historically. And, and the design review committee, you know, do you, have you, have you had a, a typical schedule? Okay.
It's all dependent on when projects, it's all dependent on when projects come in. Our initial charge with the creation of the design review committee was to actually write the design review committee guidelines, which we did, and then I believe it was edited by the town planner at the time and then shipped off to be fully further developed, I think, by an outside consultant, if I'm correct. But then, at that particular point in time, we, you know, projects were just kind of filtering in. I believe in, in the, the bylaws or, or on the website, it says that we're supposed to meet every Tuesday. Every other Tuesday or something or every Thursday. There is no reason for us to meet unless there's a project, you know, you know.
Yeah, okay. It's just so, thinking about everything, how things work, I think maybe we, you know, Amber and I could have a conversation about, you know, how, you know, how to schedule both meet committee meetings. I, I know for myself, the second and fourth Tuesday work, I mean, Thursday work perfect cause I have obligations on the first Thursday every month. I'm sorry, the second. I said, we meet on Thursdays. Your committee typically meets on a Wednesday.
Yeah, I think that if the bylaw mentions a frequency of meeting, I think that's not because you actually have to meet that often, but it's because if there's a development that gives a, the developer an understanding of, "We think this committee should be available"
Oh, yeah.
"within two weeks or so," if it's supposed to be twice a month, is kind of the point, as opposed to
Meeting for apparent reasons.
Saying, "Well, I don't, we don't meet until April," isn't a good answer.
Yeah, no, 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 no. No, we get it. And every time a project gets, you know, sent to us, we hop on it. But to just have a regularly scheduled meeting, just sit there and say, "How you doing?" doesn't make any sense.
No, I don't think any committee needs to do that, but maybe...
It, it wouldn't hurt to have a regular scheduled where, you know, but, but you only actually post it and show up if you've got something on your, an agenda. But if you have a regular schedule of, "If we have something, this, these are the nights we meet."
That's right.
If that works for you, that's good.
Probably don't wanna run into instances like tonight where they just had a meeting or they met yesterday rolling into having less than twenty-four hours turnaround time to come here.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Phil. And I, I think, I think the point we need to get to is the planning board has a set schedule. If there's nothing on the agenda, we're not gonna meet. The zoning board of appeals meets once a month. But we haven't had an application for them, so they're not gonna meet. But it may make sense as the planning board sets a schedule for the upcoming year with a deadline, that the design review committee do the same, alternating weeks. So therefore, if there was the event of somebody coming to the, to the design review committee on a Wednesday, you know, a review could be, you know, there'd be at least a full calendar week before the next upcoming planning board meeting. So we could kind of at least
I agree.
Plan, no pun intended, plan out, plan out a calendar for each committee and how they would interact with each other.
Yeah, so if your stated schedule was the Wednesday before the second and fourth Thursdays, which isn't necessarily the first and third Wednesdays, cause calendars are funny that way, that would, that would give you, you know, eight days before our meetings and, and keep them well staggered. But, you know, you've also gotta work what, with what works with your members showing up.
Exactly. Alright.
Mark, do you have something quick to add to this?
I got a few things that is kinda different in the two committees here. First, the bylaws are bylaws for the whole town and every board committees to go by. Not just because they think they're getting bigger and better in their own minds, doesn't mean they should change the bylaws to their way of thinking. Two, zoning is not easy. Zoning can be complicated. If people don't understand them and wanna be better with them, they should understand and do the homework behind the words.
Is this really relevant to the...
Yes, there is. This is relevant because if they, both boards think when a developer comes in that they wanna see the, a design and wanna talk them into a better way of making the building to their sites, this, this is almost like looking to a development and saying, "Can you think our way?" Zoning only, will only have a building, site provisions, procedures in the zoning bylaws. So both can understand. And to understand design, you gotta understand what's gonna be at the end of the result. 128 across the street is a good example. We went through a lot of, lot of meetings. I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm still involved in breaking down the zoning bylaws. I'm still involved in all the boards. And I have now, I went to a substantive meeting last night and have used some of my ideas for the zoning board.
Mark, Mark, you're going way off topic here.
But I'm just saying, there's other committees that's involved.
Yeah, but we're talking about the relationship between the planning board and the design review committee.
Which, if, if...
And you're going off on understanding zoning and stuff that's really not relevant.
A building design, okay? A building design can be a up-to-date, net zero, sorta green interior and development complex and business that can come in. Those two building people can work along here and design it to coexist, not by just what a, what's designed. We wanna see what to, see the contents, work it all together. And the planning board uses special permits to work all three, the buildings, all three committees, to work together. And work of the zoning bylaw to work it as a understandable format. I gone this far. I go, I'm going farther. I still got some of the paperwork at home that I've been designing, not designing, but breaking down. And I'm going forth and substantive is taking some of those and going forth in their charge. Design committee, I know zoning, I know I got it passed. If you wanna change it, town meeting, the attorney general. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Alright, we have a discussion on the 2021 IECC voting process. We voted in the spring for the planning board to become a member of the International Code Council. And as such, we have four votes when the ICC votes on things. And the, coming up is the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code. And we will have votes on a number of potential separate amendments on that. I'm getting more information on that. Because the planning board gets four votes, I signed up the four members of the planning board who were not up for reelection at the time, so...
I'm the only one who reads those codes.
You are, you are the one who does not currently get to vote, but we can all we can all discuss this when the time comes, so you can...
You can enlighten us.
You can enlighten us. I, I know there are some advocacy organizations that are getting involved in this, trying to advocate for stricter energy codes. And so we'll have recommendations from them as well. But anyway, so this is coming up and I just wanna let people know what the status of that is. And I think that the, the voting, which is done online, I think the, the deadline for saying who the members were has passed, so.
So what are we gonna discuss, the way we're gonna go to the future meeting?
Yeah, we can discuss, I, I don't have the, I don't know that they have published yet the information of what the changes are and what, what proposed amendments have gone through. I don't know that process. It's the first time the planning board has ever been involved in this, so.
So more to come, right?
Yeah, so it's just, yeah, no action for the board tonight, it's just letting you all know that this is happening. So. That's it for that. We have, um, it looks like some fairly old minutes that apparently slipped through the cracks.
I got like 25 notifications for minutes in my email, starting back in 2017. I don't know what that was, but all of a sudden.
I am guessing somebody went through minutes that had been approved and properly submitted, but not put on the town website and got them all on the town website.
That's exactly what happened.
And I got all the emails.
I got them too. Yeah, so.
So we're really going back to July and March of 19 here?
So we had, there was a public records request for minutes. We had the minutes. Is that right?
Yep, and it just revealed two of the older ones that existed, but were not approved, so.
So which one do we do on, all three? Let's start with July 11th, cause it's the top of the stack in my folder. It's between six and seven in mine.
I thought we reviewed these last time, no?
We can do them again.
Uh, no, July 11th wasn't on last meeting.
Oh, okay.
It still has John Rossi.
Yeah, John Rossi was no longer on in July, Tricia was on.
Oh, speaking of, um, we, we can just strike the absent. We don't need to list it, if people can figure that out from the present, so let's just strike line seven. Speaking of our associate member, it'd probably be appropriate to bring him in for 12 Pond Street, since that's a special permit.
Okay.
And that, it's also one that might be a longer process, so if somebody ends up missing more than one meeting or if somebody finds they need to recuse themselves.
Okay.
We have, uh, then he would be able to vote.
John Rossi.
No, no, Mike Moki.
Mike Moki. And Michaela too.
I gotta tell Michaela she's gonna, she's gonna think that's hysterical.
We're gonna bring in all the Cohasset staff.
She was a Hannah over there.
Oh, Hannah? Oh, wow.
Even further back.
Still talk though. He would be like, oh my gosh.
So this Hundred Fountain was that open parcel of land, right?
That was the A and R for that open parcel land, yep.
Um, not that we need to change it, but just going forward, I noticed on line 68, Mr. Crowe asked for comments from the audience. It should say from the public. I think it, it feels better. I don't think of them as an audience, I think, you know, it's the public.
You would have the same thing in line 91 as well then?
Yeah, and 89. Uh, 89, yeah. And 158. It's not terribly critical that it gets, I, I just want it, going forward, it's not a substantive change, but it's.
Row 132, page three, is it okay if we do it that way? Mr. Ruberton asked and Mr. Morrison said the dumpster will be positioned between the building and the rear parking lot.
I think that's appropriate.
Fairly condensed phraseology, but it's okay.
Okay.
When they got that Whistler Report, nearly like 10 news guys, and they're all trying to read through it this morning.
Harold, it reminded me of us doing the minutes, they're all looking at it, trying to find something.
I'm not sure what it means on, uh, on 140, Ms. Kendall accepted Mr. Morrison's offer to provide her input on the design. Like, I don't think that was like, uh...
You offered input, right?
I don't know if I did, I mean, I think, it's, it's not even.
Okay, we can strike that.
I mentioned it, right?
Let's strike it.
Yeah, I think, I think he said, I don't know, I guess I'd have to go back and look at it, it's all on tape. And what was, but I, it, in here, it almost sounds like it might be like a formal thing that I should do and I don't, I think it's the Design Review Committee's place and not mine.
Let's, let's just strike that.
So.
Let's strike that. It's all done.
I just don't, don't wanna overlap responsibilities, you know?
Um, so 182, on page, uh, 404. So Ms. Kendall said that she's not aware of meetings held behind closed doors and the planning board is not working with the project. So the paragraph makes sense roughly, cause it's the conversation, but I think the order needs to be, I mean, I think, Tricia, you responded to Kate Jurzick and some of the comments she had in that meeting. So I think the order of these minutes, it, it just doesn't, it comes out of nowhere, right? You following me?
Yeah.
So like, my, and please, Tricia, just jump in, but to me, 169 and 170 should come before 182, right? Cause it's, is it, okay.
Would you?
I.
I mean, that's not the right order of conversation, I don't care, it's just that one needs to follow the other, I think.
Okay, let's move over.
I don't know, I'd have to go back to the tape to see which, yeah.
I mean, Tricia responded directly to Kate Jurzick because of comments that were made by Kate Jurzick about the process.
But I think she might have made several, at the point, several different points.
Yeah.
And it probably just probably, maybe this one just needs.
Yeah, no, I, I think, no, I think these other points were made in that order and then you were getting back to the earlier point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe, that could be too.
That's fine.
Um.
It's tough for the reader, though.
Yeah, I was.
But, it's fine.
It should be closed, past tense doors, not closed.
So we're not changing that, we're just gonna leave that dangling tab there?
I mean, I guess on one, in front of 1, in 182, it could be in response to.
The comments from Kate Jurzick or something.
Yeah, to earlier comments by.
Sure, in response to.
That's a nice fix.
Yeah.
To earlier comments.
Just in response, yeah, in response to earlier comments, just start at line 182, that'd be perfect.
Who's Mr. Morrison again? See the? Oh, Terry Morrison, attorney, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Morrison's the, uh, the attorney.
Okay.
Uh, there's no list of documents at the end.
That's key.
We're supposed to have a list of documents. Even if, even if the answer is there are no, were no documents presented, which may, which, no, which is not the case, cause there were the A and Rs and, uh, Woodmore Estates.
Yes.
So. Is there anything else?
I don't know.
Should we vote on approving the minutes of July 11th as amended with the addition of the list of documents?
Shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that passes 5-0. March 28th.
It's interesting, cause on this one, it's the, you, it's when you discussed the IECC building codes, which is before my time, but does this mean, it says the town will be granted four voting members. Is it, was it unusual that all four voting members are part of the planning board?
Uh, the way it works is different boards and committees that qualify can register. So it's, we, it's not the town of Ashland registered, the planning board registered. I believe the selectmen may have registered separately.
Oh, okay.
And I believe the Sustainability Committee may have registered separately.
Okay.
Uh.
Cool.
But I know the planning board.
Um, on page, on page two or three on March 28th, um, these minutes bring that to my mind. What, when do we have our public hearing on those zoning changes?
Uh, we're gonna have those as soon as possible.
Cause we need to, right?
He's gonna pass out the zoning change as soon as we're done with the minutes, so we're gonna go over that.
Yep.
We're on that.
Cool.
Uh, yep.
Is the, uh, is the zoning map updated? On the town's website, is it accurate now?
I believe, I, I have to double check.
Okay.
I have not done any GIS work since I arrived here. I do not have ArcGIS on my computer. The town engineer is the, I believe, is the one that's been updating that map, but I believe it's up to date. I am assuming it's up to date.
Okay.
I think it was updated last year or something.
No, but there's a, there's a specific piece in those minutes, I think we were looking at the map and it's March 28th, 9th, and I asked a question, what did it run, 49 or 50?
Uh.
I asked a question, is this map up to date, and the former assistant planner was, said no, and then it had to be done by July. So that's why I asked.
Okay. Uh, I will, I will definitely look into that, typically that, it would be on file with the town clerk.
Got it.
Yep. It was zoning changes from his previous year?
I, I don't know more than, than, I, I don't, like, I recall asking the question, I recall looking at the map on a, on a laptop. So I'm not sure what changes weren't incorporated, I just, I think I just asked the question, like, is this up to date? And, cause I think there were dates on it that were older. And the answer was no, but it has to be done per state by July of 19, so.
The, the last change that I recall to the map was when we eliminated, what was it, the commercial neighborhood? Which was up with the old 4H property that.
Yeah, yes, that's right.
Doesn't make any sense anymore.
It's been in the last two years, I think.
Yeah. It's off of Chestnut.
And that got passed, and that got passed at the town meeting, it did go through.
We, we eliminated a very tiny zone that didn't make any sense anymore.
Okay, I'll double check into that, it's good to know. Yeah, no, cause I, I do need to, I do need to rely on you for the institutional knowledge.
Cool.
Hey.
I will say with the IECC, uh, or the ICC membership, they gave us some nice copies of the building code that Peter has found very useful.
Oh, good.
So it's had.
Yeah, no, the.
And other unintended.
ICC ninth edition building code books that are, you know, up to date. And so I, I additionally went to the, uh, well, I went to the, to the state's website and I ordered all of the Massachusetts code amendments. And so, um, and Massachusetts adopts the ICC regulations and then they make their own code amendments to them. Uh, so we have up-to-date bylaws, not bylaws, but up-to-date, uh, building codes, fire codes, plumbing codes, with the state amendments in the, in the, in the office, so. Great, they're great for just for reference. And they've come in handy a lot with the 310, 320 Pond Street application concerning sprinkler systems.
I, uh... I have the building code and the mass amendments for those in my office, but not the plumbing and electric.
We can share.
Mine's all tabbed.
Yeah, I'm starting, I'm starting the process. It's, it, it's tricky to go back and forth, you know, I think, uh, you know, I, I know the one 310, 310, 310, 320, it was quick, it was a knee-jerk reaction to say, I'm not gonna have 120C, 21099, what's the load count, what's the oxygen load, X, Y, and Z? It's pretty, it's pretty tricky stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It gets complicated fast.
It gets complicated fast, and then what's the definition and, you know, a nightclub versus R2, uh, R, you know, it, it, you need them.
Yeah, and mostly I'm doing residential, so it's not even, like, doing that part of it, which is bigger.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Uh, so are we good to approve the minutes of March 28th, 2019, as printed?
We have to fix your name.
Yeah, that'd be good, okay. Uh, as corrected?
As corrected.
Oh, and on line 99, it should be those involved. There's a D missing. If we're making another change, anyway. So, uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 28th as corrected?
Shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I wasn't here, so, so should I abstain?
Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Okay. That passes 4-0-1.
Preston Chow again is here at this February 14th meeting.
Oh, wow, I'm hungry.
You guys bet on Valentine's Day.
Yeah.
We're real romantics.
Yeah.
Auto correct or something.
You can, guy makes a lot of motions to adjourn the meeting. You can, guy makes a lot of motions to adjourn the meeting.
He's good, like.
You ready? All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes of February fourteenth, uh, with the spelling corrections?
Shall move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. Uh, that passes four-zero-one. We have finished our minutes, hooray.
Did you get that, Rebecca?
That was Josh.
Do we go discussion of plenty board, the changes, zoning changes?
Zoning changes, yes.
So these, let's kind of grab one, pass one down. So these we went over. I'm gonna submit this to town council. Um, is everybody have one?
I think, yeah.
Okay. So these would, as requested, move, uh, in the highway commerce district. Um, we would be, uh, it says sponsored by the planning board to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning, the Ashland zoning bylaws, chapter, um, two-eighty-two as follows, uh, cross-out, our, cross-outs are eliminations and bold underlined in the new language. Here, uh, the black and highlighted in yellow, um, would be moved from a E-Y, yes, to a red, no. So those just need to be, uh...
Just need to do some...
Do some, some, some editing in Word. Um, and those would be for the mini storage warehouse facilities and for construction yards and landscaping businesses. Then the C V and then the C N, they would move from a planning board special permits to, uh, no.
We can just go over the C H, C V, and C N.
So...
Commercial...
Yep, commercial highway, commercial village. Do we still have? Is, which one's C? Is it C N the one we...
So, excuse me, correct. Uh, and so, C H is co, highway commerce. C V is village commerce and C N is neighborhood commerce.
Are we sure that one of those isn't the one off of Chestnut that we eliminated?
We would have to update the zo, I would have to, uh...
The still, I guarantee you, guarantee you the still...
No, we, we eliminated one of the zones.
You wanted to eliminate commercial village because it was small.
Good, well, there was, it was the old, uh, the only property was the old four-H property off of Chestnut, which has now been developed in, um, a format that is consistent with the surrounding zoning, so we just eliminated that zone entirely. So it's possible...
So in my, and, so looking at the bylaws, the C V is still within the use table? And so the C V was never deleted out of the use table, so therefore...
We should, um...
We should.
Just, just for reference, we should check where these are on the map.
Yep.
And, um...
Okay.
I, I wouldn't necessarily change this, but I thought we had an article that was supposed to eliminate the zone entirely throughout all of the...
Whichever one was, was in the Village of the, not the Village of Americas, whichever one was in, in the four-H land, like, I think it only existed in that four-H land.
Yeah.
Right, so...
I think it's gone now.
Yeah.
And, and I think it may be that the copy of the zoning that we have was not properly edited as a result of that article.
But, but, but Preston, we, the, my only, my only comment here is, we were looking at the map and the areas where we focused were in that one-thirty-five corridor.
Yeah.
Um, so, so, we, we kind of, my belief is we proposed these changes based on looking at the map and saying...
That is true.
Putting that there wouldn't make sense. So I don't, if, I, I don't believe we would have identified one of these zones if it was... You know what I mean?
We, we, I'm just saying we should double check.
Agreed.
Yeah. I can, I can double check, but if, if this is appropriate, uh, with a couple edits, uh, I am going to, uh, work with town council and make sure, and, and host, host a public hearing on this so we can get it on the town warrant.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with advertising this as is with fixing the strike through and holding.
Should we attend the public hearing or is it...
The planning board?
Yeah.
Oh, the planning board holds the public...
We hold.
Oh, it's, oh, it's, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought you meant it was a separate event.
No, no, no.
It would be, uh, it's probably...
It'd be an agenda item, yeah.
Okay.
It has to be advertised. It has to be advertised two weeks in advance, so it won't be at our next meeting, but it would presumably be at our first meeting, first meeting in November.
Yes.
Is what we would, uh, probably advertise this for.
I was thinking it was like, um, you know how, uh, Michael Herbert holds special, um...
Public forums.
For warrant articles to, to understand them, that's what I was...
Sometimes for more complicated things, we'll do that first. We'll have like a big public discussion on... We had one at the library a few years back and ended up pulling the article because the, we decided, hey, it's not ready. But we did that before holding the public hearing.
Okay.
Um...
Can I ask a spot question, your each question on this?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Through the chairman to the planner. These changes, are you gonna include texts and tables to go with them?
Uh, we are simply changing the use table for two different uses.
That mean there has to be an old use table that is published that you're gonna change from?
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna show just the particular lines in the use table that we're changing. We're not gonna, the other, the other stuff that's not changing, we're not gonna bother printing because we're not changing it. We only show what we're changing.
So is this going into the, is it attempted to go to town meeting?
Yes, this is for fall town meeting.
And it's gonna be explained in the warrant if it's legally okay to do so. It's gotta be said.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So I, 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 I brought this to, to, uh, town council. I met with her on it. Uh, she kind of explained to me the process, uh, of Ashland zoning changes. Uh, and so Jen Ball, Assistant Town Manager, has been aw, made aware of this, these changes. And so, um, and so it's just a matter of me kind of taking them to you, making these changes. Uh, Lisa Mead, town council, gave me the language, uh, particularly up top, on top of the page. And so I'll make those changes and I can kind of put them in the newspaper.
Thank you, Peter.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Uh, with that said, uh, just quick administrative stuff. Um, we are working to, uh, one of the projects that's happening right now is on service apartments. They are doing some modification. They are working on the detention basin. They're pulling a lot of clay out. Uh, they've put some four bays in and they've put some, uh, very large, I would say, French drains that connect all the drainage together. And they've dug down, they've removed some of that silt that's been clogging up that detention basin. And so that has been moving ahead and that's, you know, a pretty good thing because I know that's been a long, uh, a, a longstanding issue for the town, that detention basin. And so that's moving ahead. Uh, and the solar project on the M B T access road, uh, they cleared all the trees and they're gonna go in and they're gonna, they have to hammer out some of the ledge, that's actually the exposed ledge. Uh, and then they're gonna regrade that entire site and then you will see, uh, they're gonna hydro seed and then they're gonna start implementing the solar panels. And so that project is moving along fairly quickly. There's a, uh, Joe, it's called Joe for Sun, Joe Kennedy, uh, who is the, uh, Executive Director of, uh, Citizens Energy. They, if you probably remember the Joe for Oil, uh, and he has developed a...
I don't know if you guys remember that at the meeting?
Yes. That's true.
I want, I want a cut.
You wanna cut, Joe for Sun?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Or Marky for Sun?
It's a nonprofit.
Yeah, it's, so, that's, so he is, is really developed this, um, I would say, application or application process or, or, or really a subsidy. So the energy that's collected off the landfill is getting put back into the grid, creates a subsidy and so he's gonna turn the subsidy back over in the form of stifles of three hundred dollars to, uh, citizens that qualify. And so, um, I'm working with Citizens Energy. Uh, Phil, if you wanna join in, I know you're just a sustainability coordinator for a little bit of time, but they're gonna come out here and meet with, um, town staff and, and, and with the senior center and to hopefully help educate people about the subsidy. And if they do qualify, you have to be an R-two customer, uh, residential customer to qualify, but that's a pretty good program. That's kind of, is kind of a, a product of, or a byproduct of the solar, uh, array that's being developed.
That's cool.
So, that's something that's pretty cool that's happening, I think. But, other than that, the downtown project's moving forward. We had a big meeting today, uh, with EverSource, Verizon, Comcast. Um, so things are really starting to kind of, B S C is still kind of running the, um, the consultants on that. And so things are fairly, you know, moving forward. And, um, that's all I really can kind of update everybody on. Emma and I, or Emma, is really working on the zoning, uh, R F P because the town received a grant to review zoning in downtown. And so, uh, we're, hopefully, we're gonna get that one going fairly soon, but that's just taking a little bit of time to get our hands around and kind of move stuff forward, so.
To review what kind of zoning downtown?
The downtown zoning.
Just the, the overlay district?
The overlay districts. Uh, the town received a grant, I believe, of, they're gonna arrange about twenty-five thousand dollars from the Department of Housing Community Development to review the zoning downtown. And it was rece, it was issued last December, right before, I believe, Sheila left. And so it's kind of one of those things that's kind of up in the air, what can, what can we do? And so we can continue on and we just have to spend the money by, uh, I think, June thirtieth of this fiscal year. So things, it has to happen. This, it's, it's there, so mechanically, um, Emma's been kind of taking a look at that. And so, and then Emma, do you wanna talk about ADA stuff or?
Yeah.
We don't have to worry about the doors being law?
No.
I, I think it's eleven now, actually.
Okay.
Um...
It used to be ten all the time.
Yeah, it's, um... We're putting together an application for a grant from the Massachusetts Office of Disability, um, to create a, an ADA self-assessment and transition plan, uh, for Ashland. Um, and so that will, um, yeah, look at, uh, both programs the town offers as well as the physical structures and right-of-ways, uh, assess which ones are, uh, compliant with ADA and which ones, you know, need improvement. And then try to figure out, kind of like complete streets, um, a priority list and, uh, order about which, um, the town can, uh, address them. Uh, and that can, you know, possibly inform, uh, some future, uh, plans or projects, so.
And then, it, it really opens up the town for funding to, to correct some of these issues, you know, and so... Without a plan in place, a transition plan or a, you, you're not really, you're not, uh, you're not really even allowed to apply for funding. So, uh, since it is a downtown project, um, you know, maybe we can look at, you know, access from the library, town buildings, crosswalks. You know, downtown hall is, is a perfect example. Uh, the post office, you know, you know, how do these things interact with each other and, uh, but we just have to do the, do the work upfront, I would say.
Okay, uh, is that, uh, is there anything else? Any member reports? Uh, wine and cheese, uh, wine and chocolate, or is that the farmer's market? Something, it's, uh...
Yeah, maybe.
It's, uh, something good. I don't know. It's, I, I remember it's, it's something good this weekend. It's always good at the farmer's market.
Then I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
To adjourn this meeting at ten oh-three P M.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes five-zero.